I knew once we started out. Him and my brother. We had a big record. Well.
There's a story I gotta tell you.
Tell me when you're ready.
I'm slipping through your back.
I better know.
That's his house.
Patsy Sullivan is here. I don't see her sitting there. Patsy Sullivan.
He's right there.
Except the.
Make sure your mic's off, I was.
Where is that?
His house.
Oh, this right light. Well, the creek used to go down right here. There you go. It's going down there right now.
Hey, I got the jury duty.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the April 8th, 2002 meeting of the Halton City Council. We will call on Councilmember Dewey Markham at this time to lead us in the invocation and pledge of allegiance to the flag, if you would stand.
Father, tonight, we're thankful for this day that you've given us. We pray that Lord, with this council, that you will give each one of us the wisdom and the knowledge to do what is right for Halton City. We pray that you, that we will have this meeting in a way that would be good for Halton City and to show integrity as we do the city's business. We ask these things in thy son's name. Amen.
My congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, I want to begin the meeting tonight by welcoming you. We have a good turnout here in our council chambers, and we always encourage members of the community to, to be present for our council meetings. So, welcome to you, and to those who are watching over our local cable access, HCTV, Channel 7, we welcome you. This is being live telecast, as well as it will be replayed at a number of intervals between now and the next two weeks. In addition to our usual TV cameras, we have members of the press here from a couple of our TV channels, and we're pleased to have them, as well as our reporters from, from the printed media. The first item on the agenda tonight, it is my privilege to make two presentations. The first, a Child Abuse Prevention Month, and I want to ask Ms. Dorothy Tilly, if you will, join me at the, at the podium. Ms. Tilly, welcome to our council meeting tonight, and it is my privilege to present to you this official proclamation. I'd like to read it at this time, and after I've read it and presented it to you, if you have some comments you'd like to make to the council and to the audience, we will be honored to have you do so. Whereas, more than 28,000 cases of child abuse and neglect were confirmed in Texas in fiscal year 2001, and whereas, 10,719 cases of child abuse and neglect are reported in Tarrick County in 2001, and whereas, SAVE, that program, provided child abuse prevention services to 208 families and 503 children in 2001, and whereas, child abuse prevention is a community responsibility, and finding solutions depends on the involvement among all people, and whereas, communities must make every effort to promote programs that benefit children and their families, and whereas, effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnership among agencies, schools, religious organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community, and whereas, everyone in the community should become more aware of child abuse prevention and consider helping parents raise their children in a safe and nurturing environment. Now therefore, I, Calvin Wyatt, Mayor of the City of Halton City, hereby proclaim the month of April 2002 to be Child Abuse Prevention Month in Halton City, and I urge all citizens to work together to help reduce child abuse, and, and not only child abuse, but also neglect, and to do that significantly in the years to come. It's my privilege to present that to you at this time.
Thank you very much.
And would you like to address the audience?
I'm very pleased to be here. I work for Alliance for Children, which is a children's advocacy center, and we have a collaboration with Halton City in doing our part in protecting children from further abuse and making the community aware that there is child abuse in our, our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The second proclamation I have tonight is in regard to National Library Week, and Ms. Patsy Sullivan, would you like to join me at the podium at this time, please? I believe Ms. Grove was to have been here tonight, and she's not able. We're sorry she's not feeling well. And Ms. Sullivan, before I read this proclamation, would you like to introduce the other members of your library board to us tonight, please?
Those that are here tonight are Travis Royal, Betty Bronstad, and Bonnie Richards.
We're very pleased to have all of you here tonight, and we're very honored to present this proclamation. Whereas, our nation's libraries and librarians play a vital role in connecting millions of people with the resources they need to live, learn, work, and thrive in the 21st century, and whereas, Americans use libraries to find jobs, to learn to read, to be literate online, to find vital health facts, to research their environment and their diets, and to find food for their souls, and whereas, the community's library is an important part of a community's infrastructure, as is any road, bridge, public building, or utility, and whereas, libraries are places of opportunity, libraries are the heart of the American dream, and they're part of, they are a place for education and self-help, and whereas, in times of economic instability, Americans turn to and depend upon their libraries and their librarians, and whereas, awareness and support must be increased for libraries by increasing the visibility of libraries in a positive context, and by communicating clearly and strongly why libraries are both unique and valuable, and whereas, library supporters and libraries across America and beyond are celebrating National Library Week with the campaign for "America's Libraries at Your Library." Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Calvin Wyatt, Mayor of the City of Halton City, proclaim April 14th through the 20th, 2002, to be National Library Week in Halton City, and I encourage all residents of Halton City and the surrounding communities to use their library for the purpose of improving their lives and the lives of their families. Remember, rediscover America at your library. Ms. Sullivan, it's my pleasure to present this proclamation to you, and would you like to address the audience?
I just want to say thank you to the citizens of Halton City, those of you that are sitting here, those that are out in TV land, to the council, for the support that you do give our library. If you haven't had a chance to come visit us, please do, and we are working on plans for a new library, and we ask that you not only come this next week, but the other 52 weeks in the year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. And, members of the council, any of you like to make comment for Ms. Tilly on the child abuse proclamation, or to Ms. Sullivan regarding the National Library Week? Okay, there being none, we move to the consent agenda. If you're looking at your agenda tonight, items three through seven are considered to be routine and self-explanatory, and will be enacted by the council in one motion. Approval of this consent agenda authorizes the city manager to implement each item in accordance with staff and with board recommendation. Councilmember Everett.
Mayor, I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda.
Okay, I might remind Councilmember Everett that there was a correction to the minutes.
That is included correction.
Okay, it's included in that. Councilmember Hurley.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Councilmember Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. I will be voting in favor of the consent agenda. I'll be abstaining from item number four due to conflict interest.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If you would, gentlemen, register your votes, and that carries unanimously. Item number eight, a public hearing. Mr. Torres, is this something you would like to address at this time, or Mr. Pliska?
I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Pliska, our planning director, Mayor.
Mayor, city council members, on items number eight and items number nine, the applicant is Mr. Guy Levine. This is for Guy's Paint and Body Shop, which is the application for a conditional use permit for auto sales facilities and an auto paint and body shop facility. On April the 3rd, I received correspondence from Mr. Levine in which he would like to extend the date of this public hearing due to family illness, and he confirmed that this morning in a telephone conversation with myself, so I put this before the council. Would we like to continue with this, in which I'll give you a briefing on these two cases?
Okay, with the consent of the council, and with the agreement of our attorney that I can do so, can we address both items eight and nine at one time?
Yes, that'd be permitted, Mayor.
Okay, at this time, I will open the public hearing regarding item number eight in connection with this application for a conditional use permit to operate an auto paint and body shop on item number eight, and to operate an auto sales facility at the address indicated. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak either for or against this request for conditional use permits on this piece of property? Okay, there being none, again, I turn to our counselor. Is it appropriate, I receive a motion at this time to continue the public hearing until a later date?
If that's the desire of the council, then I would recommend that you continue this, and that way the applicant at the next council meeting could address the council during the public hearing, or if he were to bring up any points that another member of the public wanted to address, they would still have the opportunity to do that.
Okay, with that in view, Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would move to continue agenda items number eight and nine to our next regularly scheduled council meeting.
And that would be April 22nd, 7:30 here in the council chambers.
That is correct.
Okay, second, Councilmember Markham.
Second.
Councilmember Everett?
That was for a second.
We have a motion to continue both items eight and nine. Mr. Torres, any comments?
No, sir. Staff agrees that the, the public hearing should be continued.
Okay, if you would, gentlemen, there being no further discussion, register your vote, and that carries by unanimous vote. Item number 10 is the flood mitigation plan, and I would suspect most of you here in the audience tonight are here in regard to this item. There was some question earlier on regarding the need to fill out a minister's card, an appearance before the city council card. There is not a need to do that, since this is a, a public hearing. Anyone in the audience wishing to do so is welcome to come forward in just a moment. At this time, Mr. Torres?
Mayor, I would like to ask Greg Van Newenhuis to go ahead and briefly address this item and explain to the citizens and, and what we're doing here, and it may be helpful in some way.
Good evening. What we have before us is a public hearing for the flood mitigation plan. First, I want to back up. The Little Fossil Creek situation that the city's currently entering into an agreement with the Corps of Engineer is different than what we're looking at here tonight. What we're looking at here tonight is we're looking at citywide where we have flooding problems, not necessarily floodplain-related problems, maybe localized flooding, and those are the issues that we're looking at tonight. Those are what I'm hoping that the public is here to provide some public comment on. But to back up, in 99, I became aware of a program through the Texas Water Development Board whereby if the city would prepare a flood mitigation plan, they, the Texas Water Development Board would fund 75% of the actual cost of the plant. The city entered into a $19,000 agreement with the engineering firm of Teignall &amp; Perkins. The agreement did meet the criteria for the Texas Water Development Board. Consequently, they did approve our grant, and they're funding 75% of that amount. I believe it's $14,750 with the balance, $4,250 being paid by the city. The purpose of the plan, again, is to identify those areas that do have flooding, and to, if not come up with solutions, come up with direction on, on how to solve those problems, and additionally, to provide mechanisms to the public whereby the hazards caused by flooding could be reduced, and to provide for a mechanism whereby the rates that people who live in the floodplain, that their rates would be reduced if the city did some things, and some of those things being public awareness, providing information through the Proud and Progressive, through the newspaper, through brochures when new residents enter into our community, and lastly, in terms of public awareness, for the city to enter into the community rating system. Some other things that the plan looks at is increasing our current drainage maintenance program, and looks at other areas in the city to see what specifically could be done. The driving force in my mind for entering into such a, a grant with the Texas Water Development Board was due to the current situation and, and situation that's existed for years in the Skyline Mobile Home Park area. As probably everybody here is aware, that problem is a two-pronged problem, and, and the two phases of it is while it's a hazard to the people that live there, and especially the people that live fairly close to, to Whites Branch Creek, it's also a hazard to our public safety personnel when they try to rescue those people during flooding events. And so with that in mind, that was one of the driving forces for me to apply for this grant on behalf of the city, and, and we did obtain the grant. So, what you're being asked here tonight is to, to hear the input from the public, to, to hear where they may have flooding programs that aren't addressed in this plan, and for the council to either ask us or require us to go include those specific areas in this plan, and at the same time, to adopt an ordinance or to draft an ordinance to be prepared for you to adopt at your next meeting for first reading on April 22nd, and second reading for your one meeting in May. One thing I'd like to add as well is that this has to be adopted by the city council in the final form, to your satisfaction, by the end of May, so that the Water Development Board can have it by June. The, we have run out of extensions to do this plan. Having said that, I would like to introduce a key player that's drafted this plan, and that would be Gary Vickery, and he's from the Denton office of the engineering firm of Teignall &amp; Perkins, and Gary would be happy to respond to any questions that you might have as well. With that, I'll, I'll leave it up to questions from you, or, or have the audience speak.
What I need to do at this point is open the public hearing. You've introduced the subject matter, and if you gentlemen would, go ahead with your presentation, and if you don't mind, identify yourself again for the record as you begin your presentation.
My name is Gary Vickery. I'm with Teignall &amp; Perkins, as Greg said, in our Denton office, and I was the, the manager of the flood mitigation program. I think Greg has pretty well covered what we've tried to accomplish here. The, the flood mitigation plan has a number of purposes, and that is to, in a nutshell, really to make a comprehensive look at the drainage conditions in a given city, try to put together a, a plan that, that is comprehensive in how it addresses those. What you have to keep in mind is it's, while it's comprehensive, it's, it's not at all detailed. For example, when we had our public meeting back in August over in the library, we looked at some specific areas where citizens provided input on drainage issues that they knew about that especially I was not aware of, not, not being down here when it rains all the time like they are. So we marked some of those with yellow or orange buttons there on, on the map to help us identify where those problems are. You can see a few of those are in the floodplain, many are not. Like any other city, in addition to floodplain flooding-type problems, there's also a lot of localized drainage problems due to inlets not being big enough, or not enough of them, not enough storm drain, or all kinds of different issues that cause these local drainage problems. The flood mitigation plan is not really intended to try to address these each specifically. While we gather this information from the citizens, both in the public meeting in August and hopefully here tonight, the, the intent is really to get an overall plan of things that the city can do to begin to address flooding problems. Some of the problems that we've identified and addressed in the plan were actually things that the city's already dealing with, most specifically on the panel that we have here on the floor that, that deals with Little Fossil Creek, and the work that the Corps of Engineers will be doing to take a large chunk of the city out of the floodplain and deal with those flooding issues in that area. As Greg mentioned, the other probably primary area that we saw that was flooding problems was up at the Skyline Mobile Home Park, and so we've addressed that in the plan, and, and one of the possibilities that the plan will make, make possible is actually purchasing some of those properties to remove those structures from the floodplain. Obviously, one way to reduce flooding is to decrease the amount of water that comes in contact with structures. In other way, when, when that's not feasible, is to get the structures out of the way of the water, and that's one of the options here. As Greg mentioned, one of the prerequisites of getting a project grant from FEMA through the Water Development Board is the preparation of this plan, and I think their real purpose is that they don't want people just running and asking for money until they've got a plan in place. How, how they intend to use it, what are their real problems? It's quite interesting, sometimes you begin to prioritize problems and identify flooding problems, they're not always prioritized the way you might think at first glance, and so this plan helps to try to identify those. I think one of the real purposes of our public meeting tonight is to allow the citizens to share with us what they can about drainage conditions, flooding problems, keeping in mind again that the plan will not specifically address, like you point almost any one of the, the dots on the map, and the intent of, of the plan is not to specifically address those. However, some of these drainage problems that we'll hear about tonight, and that we've already heard about, will require some structural improvements, additional storm drain, street improvements, channel improvements. One possibility that, that the plan sets forth is to actually do a drainage master plan that does take a very detailed look at drainage conditions in the city, and, and one by one identifies what these problems are, what the causes are, what the remedies are, and their associated costs, prioritizes those costs, and helps the city arrange to determine where do we start? Where do we start fixing all the local drainage problems? The first step in all of that is to find out where are all these local drainage problems? And I really see tonight, that's, that's what we're here for tonight, and what we want from the citizens is input in that area.
Okay, thank you very much. And, members of the council, do any of you have questions for either Greg or this gentleman? If you will, other than just questions for clarity, if you will, let's allow the public to, to voice their concerns before the council really gets deeply involved in, in, in that. So, members of the council, any questions for clarity? Okay, then we will begin at this point to invite anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward, and let me state just a couple of ground rules. We do have four or five people who have filled out speakers cards, and I'll go ahead and call on those first, but you do not have to have a speaker's card filled out. If you want to speak on this subject, you will be given an opportunity to do so. We have a time limit of five minutes, and I'm going to ask our city secretary, if she would, to, to give me an indication when someone is, has reached the five-minute point. We do want to hear what you have to say. This is a serious issue, an important issue, a significant issue in Halton City, and your input, your ideas, your thoughts, your questions are very, very important to us as, as we move forward. The first speaker's card I have, I believe I already opened the public hearing a while ago, did I not? Yeah. Okay, so the public hearing was opened some time back, and we're ready to proceed. Mr. Greenwood, if you would, would you come forward and give us your name and address again for the record?
Good afternoon. My name is Jimmy Greenwood. Everybody calls me JW or other things, but I live at 6338 Salona Circle, South, and I have a few pictures here for the council members if you'd like.
If you'll hand those to Councilmember Jennings, he'll pass them down, and if you would, go ahead and continue, Mr. Greenwood.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to thank all the council members and Honorable Mayor, Mr. Wyatt, and Ms. Harris, and thank you for letting us come up here and take y'all's time to hear our plea for some help in our neighborhood, and my fellow neighbors that are here this afternoon. It would take my five minutes to introduce all of them, but we're the neighbors of Salona Circle.
Could I ask you to ask them to just raise their hands if they live on Salona Circle? Okay, thank you very much.
And we try to get here in full force to show y'all that our concern for this high water that is in our neighborhood, which we have some elderly people and some folks that are disabled, some of them's got cancer, and if the high water persisted at a time she needed to go to the doctor, she couldn't get there, and they wouldn't come get her, unless it be able to boat. But anyway, and the high water also runs over our sewer system down the streets, and so that, mixed with the sewer system, and that water's not too good either. And the people that have to get out and go to work or come home from work runs into a task of parking their car somewhere where it might be vandalized or whatever. So, we have, I, I talked to Mr. Wyatt and Mr. Everett the other afternoon, and they saw all the high water, and we made a, a pass between us on some suggestions, and I'd like to see y'all follow up, maybe on those suggestions that we talked about putting in another pipe along the side of the one that is existence there, of the same size, if not bigger. And I, I told Mr. Wyatt and Mr. Everett that I would, and I'm speaking for my neighbor, Mr. DeWassavon, that lives by me. He can't be here because he broke, uh, he fractured his heel when he fell this afternoon. And, but he told me to speak for him and tell you that between he and I, we would grant an easement between our houses to put a pipe for a drainage system that would go back toward Randy Haflin Construction Site, and maybe propose to get Randy to let the pipe go across his establishment into the proposed street that's adjacent to his construction, and then it would continue on down that proposed street down Midway. Would seem like a very good solution to our problem. And if, if at all, anything that any of the other neighbors could help in this joint effort of getting this high water problem situation taken care of, we would do anything. We would even contribute our labor, and I think I speak for all of them in this. So, thank you.
Okay, if you would, wait there just a moment. Members of the council, any questions for Mr. Greenwood? Thank, thank you, Mr. Green. Councilmember Williams?
Mr. Green? Is it Mr. Green or Mr. Greenwood?
Greenwood.
Okay. I'm right here.
I'm sorry.
Okay. These photos you're taking, they were taken this last- These photos you taking, they were taken this last...
They were taken Saturday, Sunday afternoon.
Sunday afternoon.
Yes, sir, they were taken about the same time, Mr. White and Mr. Everett were out there.
Okay. The high water we had previous to that, a week and a half ago, did you have water this high at your house at that time also?
It was almost that high.
Okay. Did it get into any of the homes or just, just the edges?
Not in particular, the homes, it got up in, uh, two or three of the garages. You know, the garages are a little bit lower in their own height.
Yes, sir.
It'll get up into them, but the, the foundation, you know, was probably about three or four inches higher.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Greenwood. Uh, the next person who spill, filled out, uh, a card is, uh, Mr. Tony Hatley. Mr. Hatley, if you would, come forward and, uh, give us your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Tony Hatley, I'm not used to all this focal stuff, but, uh, a lot of y'all know me, and thank you, Mr. Mayor and the council for letting me speak just a minute, and I'm just concerned at what can happen. I, I live at 3232 Fitcher Road, and this last rain of the, uh, which I've got a few pictures here, uh, of the March the 19th, which I didn't think we'd ever get any more than that, but we sure got it. And that's my backyard, and that's the elevation, just look at it, I'm not too good with a digital camera yet, but, uh, what has happened, I don't know if it's a problem between Legend Point or the, uh, the, uh, Haltum, uh, the new park up that way that has dumped more water on us, uh, on Fitcher Road, but across the, uh, middle school there at Haltum Middle School, there, it looks like about five foot of water coming down there when it starts raining, the magnitude that we've had in these last two rains, because before cars could cross it, now they cannot, there's no way, and it's shooting up, I'd say about six foot in the air when it comes across the school ground, that ditch across there, and what that does, it goes directly into my yard, my bank, and this is the first time in 14 years I've seen any, and I've seen it when the water went over the rails on Haltum Road, I mean, on Fitcher Road right there. And this is the first time the bank ever caved in. As y'all see, there's some cave-in on the banks, and I was just concerned, and I know that, uh, we've always got to work on the south end to fix the south and then move up to the north, or you'll flood the people down there. But I just wanted to know, that's why I came up tonight, what the projection was, if there was any idea if you were ever gonna clean it out all the way and concrete the banks, which is, I noticed that Watauga and places like this in Richland Hills have done this, which alleviates, alleviates the pressure of the water going down the creek. But this is what I'm concerned in, and this last time I had a little bit more cave-in, I didn't take more pictures, but, uh, I did have some more cave-in. And I, I've talked to Greg, I mentioned it, I, I went out and saw him the other day, which is, uh, I'm not here to raise a bunch of cane about nothing, all that, I'm just concerned, and I know y'all, you can do what you got to do with the money and the federal agencies that we can use, which is, I know that, but I just, I wanted to be on record, and I hope I get me another little dot there about Fitcher Road and, uh, Little Fossil. Put me a dot right there, and that's all I got.
Uh, members of the council, uh, questions, comments? Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Hatley, for a point of clarification, if we were headed north on Fitcher Street toward Broadway, which, which piece of property is yours, or would you be on the right or the left-hand side of Fitcher?
I'd be on the right, there's about a 30-foot flag, I'm pretty patriotic, because I was adopted when I was a kid from Colombia, South America, and you can see my flag flying.
Okay, I know, right where you're going.
I'm the one that sits back.
Okay. So you're actually right there at the low point where the, where the creek crosses Fitcher, you're the house immediately to the right, you're headed up the hill?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes, Ms. Hat, this isn't a problem that came up overnight, I know this problem's been, uh, back in the 60s, there was a problem there, I don't remember that bank wearing away like it is now, that I'm concerned about that. Uh, one question I've got to ask you, a couple of your pictures there showed some debris and showed some, uh, vegetation growing up high in that creek, and I believe in between probably a block farther to the west of you, all the way back through the Haltum Road Bridge, to where it turns down around Fossil down there, there's a lot of vegetation in there now and a lot of blockage, and I've talked to some neighbors over on Fossil Drive, and, uh, they feel like some people back up north of them are dumping some stuff in on that. Do you think that vegetation and blockage is worse now than it was when you bought the property?
No, the only other time was back in 83, uh, in fact, I had just bought it and I was redoing the house, and, and I had to come down there at 2:00 in the morning, that's when we got 10 inches of rain that night, and they called me and said, "I think your house gonna flood." It never did, I looked like an island out there. I put my cabinets that I had bought up on bricks in my shop back there, and a, and a tree went crossways in the creek and that's, and they had, the city had to come and pick it up, lift it out, and that's why it flooded the, not the neighbor to the south of me, but 1, 2, 3, 4, the fourth one down, they were flooded, and I walked through four foot of water then to, uh, get to my house there. But it, it, it hadn't been, but what has happened, we have let the, the middle of the creek grow up with these trees, I've, I've got one that's about 40, well, about 30 foot, and it went down, it's still got some green stuff, it's laying over in the creek now, but all the small ones that were south of the bridge on, uh, Fitcher there, they washed on down. So the only one that's laying over that hadn't uprooted is this, it's about this big around, it's a, it's a, uh, uh, willa.
Willa.
Not a weeping, but the other kind of willa. But anyway, it, it's laying there and it'll go, but that's a, I have never seen it until this time with this water coming in to the side. I've never had a problem since, since back then.
The reason I ask you about the vegetation, in the last budget, we put a utility worker in the budget, he's yet to been hired yet, but that is one of the, the problem spots, uh, that we've had, is vegetation and stuff growing in that creek, and it's a, uh, program where this utility worker will take trustees out of our jail and take them out and work them, and get use out of them, and try to clean that part of the creek, and it's, you know, the, the tree you're talking about is gonna be something, we're gonna have to have someone else, but those bushes and stuff that could be cut down with machetes, I think we could take care of that problem.
Yeah, but the deal is, John, they stopped on the west side of Fitcher by the park. They did not come on the east, you might say, going out to my side.
Right.
I've got about 300 yards of, uh, of, uh, backyard. That's exactly, they cleaned out the park area there and stopped, I questioned that, but we didn't have the money to come on around and clean mine. Now, the last couple of years, there has been a pest control that's come down there and sprayed, and, and to kill the foliage, and this is some of these trees that have been rotting in the, laying there, finally rotted enough, and they, this last rains we've had since have been so humongous have washed them down. But, uh, they didn't come and clean any vegetation out down south, I guess you'd say.
Any further questions, Councilmember Williams?
No, sir.
For Mr. Hatley. Thank you, Mr. Hatley.
Thank you.
Uh, for your input, our next speaker, Sherri Thompson. Ms. Thompson, if you would, uh, come to the lectern at this time, give us your, uh, of course, we know your name, Sherri Thompson, but if you'll give us your address for the record, please.
I live at 6318 Salona Circle South, now if you excuse me, I'm gonna be shaking, but this, this is not the first time I've been here, and this is not the first time y'all have heard me complain about this, and it seems like I've seen this before 10 years ago, where did it go from 10 years ago? Why has this not been in the works to start? I, I don't understand. I challenge each and every one of y'all to come down, when it's raining like it did Sunday, try to get in and out, bring a bucket, help us scoop this water out, because my house is totally gonna be ruined. I have a one-year-old grandbaby that usually comes and sees me every weekend, he could not get down there to see me this weekend, I could not, I got out, but I could not get back into my house for four hours. It was waist-deep. The pictures that you people are seeing now are nothing compared to where it is at 6318, it's waist-deep. And I don't understand why I have to feel discriminated against on that part of Haltum City when I see everything being done on the other end of Haltum City, and this fossil creek is not gonna fix our problem, it is a drainage problem, the water has to rise before it can flow through. Someone is gonna drown there one of these days. We have idiots that go down the road 50 miles an hour, which pushes it into our houses. Something has to be done, barricades do not stop people. Y'all put the barricades up, they go around them. We have crime prevention that comes down there and says, "Come get sandbags." When we put sandbags up, where does it, where does the water go then? It just goes to another person's house. I'm pleading for help down there, I don't want to move from there, I like where I live, my home is a nice home, but I think that there's something that this city can do to either make a better drainage or to improve the one that we have. All the water comes from Carson all the way down, it was swirling down and around our block because the two drains at, at the school were full, and it was just swirling around our block. It had quit raining for two hours and was still rising, and I just don't think that is fair to us 40 houses and my neighbors that have to live like this. We get no help keeping the drain out. If each and every one of y'all would drive down my street right now, it's pitiful. There is dirt, there is debris, you, you don't want us parking our cars on the, in the grass, you want our lawns mowed and kept nice and neat, I try to do that because I like for my home to look nice. Do you know how ugly my yard is now with everything up to my front porch? It's horrible. And so I challenge each and every one of y'all to have your phone on whenever I'm flooding, and let me call you, and you come down and just stand there with me, because it's a very scary situation. And I appreciate y'all listening.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Uh, questions, uh, comments for Ms. Thompson? Thank you. Uh, our fourth and final person who has filled out an appearance card, James McGrew. Mr. McGrew? Uh, Mr. McGrew, if you would, uh, we have a policy, if you don't mind removing your hat, uh, I would appreciate it. Uh, give us your, your address, please.
Okay, I live at 928 Del Prado, apartment 158, Ulyss, Texas.
Okay, I noticed the address you have listed here is 5812 Bonanza, Lot 46.
I own four lots.
Okay, and what you're gonna speak to us about is all four of those lots?
I wanna speak to you about two of them, I really have two questions.
Okay.
What was the address on Bonanza, Mayor?
5812.
Nevermind, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, lots 146 and 147 are the ones I'm concerned about. I'd like to know what lot y'all intend on buying, and can I get 146 and 147 added to it?
Uh, Mr. Torres, uh, would you like to answer that question?
I'll, I'll try to address that. Keep in mind that the, that the plan that's being looked at this evening is, is just a conceptual plan. There's no, by, by the city's council, by the city council's, uh, potential adoption of that document does not necessarily mean that, that, that there would be any buyout. That's just one of the recommended items for remedy of the flood problems in town that is suggested. Uh, we probably have a lot more work to do to really make that kind of decision as to whether or not the city would be interested in, in purchasing a property and removing it, uh...
So y'all have no idea what lots y'all intend to buy, or thinking about buying or anything like that?
No, sir. Couldn't, I, I don't, I do not, you know, I'm fairly new here, but, but I do not believe that, that they've gotten to that level of detail yet to decide whether or not they're gonna do it.
So you have no criteria, what you gonna use?
Uh, Greg may be able to address this a little better.
And you're exactly right, we haven't sat down, because as Gary Vickery had mentioned, this plan right now is not that detailed. However, once the plan's adopted and we have this as a potential remedy for that situation in the Skyline Mobile Home Park area, the lots that we would specifically be looking at are first those lots that are in the actual floodway, those are the lots that would be identified on the National Flood Insurance Rate Maps, and then we'd be looking at the lots that are in the floodway fringe immediately adjoining those lots. And, and I don't have an accurate number of exactly those lots, and, but the lots that typically get flooded, you know, that got flooded three weeks ago, and the lots that were in danger just this past weekend, if it's those two lots, I've got a pretty good idea that those would be lots that we would again be considering. At this point, it is, as the manager had indicated, it's not definite, it, it's one of the elements of the plan that, that we would be considering if council adopts this plan and we can get additional funding through the federal government, through other mechanisms, it, it would be something that, that we would study further. The plan also indicates that there are some structural improvements that could be done in the area, however, from our experience, i- it doesn't appear that the structural improvements will provide the economic benefit that actually a buyout would, but that's something that we would study further once the plan got adopted.
Mr. McGrew, did that answer your question?
Yes, I have a question.
Do you have other comments?
I guess, yes, in the future, y'all notify us through the paper or something like that, and y'all gonna have another discussion on this, or...
Mr. Torres?
Yeah, uh, we can do that, I can personally give you a call to make sure, I think what will more than likely happen, the next couple of council meetings, this particular item will be back on here, so, uh, just, just knowing that, on April 22nd we'll meet again, and on May 13th, more than likely, there'll be some kind of discussion, uh, continued discussion on this matter at both of those meetings.
Okay, thank you, that answered my question.
Thank you, Mr. McGrew. Anyone else in the audience like to come forward at this time? If you would, sir, please come up, uh, give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Bill Hines, and I live at 20 Donald Court in Hurst, but I own three properties in Skyline, I'm also president of the Board of Administrators at Skyline, uh, and I would like to say thank you for allowing us to come and be here. We didn't find out about, till we read about it in the paper today, so we kinda pushed things aside to, to be here, but...
Mr. Hines, if you would, would you identify the properties you own, uh, the lot numbers in Skyline?
Okay, I personally own lots 203, 211, and 77.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Uh, I think that, uh, I appreciate the fact that you're going to maybe discuss this again at some other council meetings, because, uh, a couple of the board members met with Mr. Torres just this week, and this was one of the issues we kinda discussed a little bit, uh, because of the flooding that had happened, and I would like to say we appreciate the city for the work that they did in coming out there to help us when that did flood. We had several people that they, uh, they helped to get out of their homes, and we do appreciate that so very much. I think Mr. Torres personally came out one time himself, so, uh, we appreciate all that that everybody did to help us, the people appreciate it. I think that, uh, if this comes to a buyout, there may be some legal issues that we may need to have our attorney to discuss because of the way our declaration and bylaws read, uh, I think it's maybe something that maybe our attorney and your attorney could, could get together on and discuss. We would be willing to work with any way that, that is possible, as long as it doesn't conflict with what, uh, the law says our declaration has to do, and, and I, we would, we, as a board, we're willing to try anything that we can possibly do to help, uh, in any situation that, that is happening out there at Skyline, because, uh, there's some people out there that really do need some help in this situation, so, uh, my lots personally would not be involved in this, I don't think, uh, because they're up higher, and I don't think that my lots would be personally involved, but as president of the board, I did want to address you, and, uh, we have two other members of the board here tonight, uh, we do appreciate you allowing us to come and just share with you for a moment.
Thank you, Mr. Hines. Uh, members of the council, any questions or comments for Mr. Hines? Thank you very much. Uh, Councilmember Williams?
I don't have a question for him, I've got a suggestion, only contacting these people, can we put a, uh, tablet or something in the bank and have them sign their name and their address where we can, uh, notify them when we have the next meeting? meeting? Would that be too much trouble, Ms. Secretary?
Mr. Torres, can we accommodate that?
Yes, we can do that. James, maybe you can help us out there.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to address the flood mitigation plan? Mr. Ackland? Mr. Ackland, if you will, give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Ray Ackland. I live at 2532 Oakwood Terrace. Although I'm not directly involved at my homestead, I own another piece of property on McCullar Street. And I had the opportunity in the last couple of rains to do my own water study because I stood out there and watched where the water was going while it was raining because I don't have access to the topographic maps and things, so I just kind of looked where it was going. My observation for the engineers and for, for the state staff, first, I'd like to say that the staff has always been very responsive in trying to come down and clean the things out when they've been identified to keep, to keep the rising water that we can maintain, you know, when we can spot those things. My particular property on McCullar has a little creek that runs there, right, right through the two pieces. And there's a lot of water that comes from there. There's about 75 acres, 50, 50 to 75 acres just north of McCullar that seems to dump, falls south. All that land starts right there at McCullar, just north of McCullar, and starts going south at that time. It's my understanding, and maybe the staff can address this as well, that maybe in the near future, when they redo McCullar, would be a perfect opportunity to try to get that first 50 acres of water from continuing south towards Solona Circle and, and the 155 apartments in between there. There's 155 apartments north of Solona Circle and all those people get this water rushing through. The apartments had the sewer problem this weekend as well and they had to evacuate three families from there. So if we can identify that, the, the inflow problem, Mr. Greenwood's plan's fine, you know, that addresses getting it out once it's down there, but if we could stop some of it from coming down in the first place. Big fossils right there to the left, to the east, maybe they can dump through that. I believe maybe that's the plan, I don't know, to start getting that first 50 acres of water going some other direction, I think will help a lot. We're getting a lot of wash in through there and it's starting to eat on the side of McCullar Street right there, but I'm sure that'll be addressed when the weather clears up a little bit. So I just wanted to bring that to their attention. 6112, 6032, right, right in that area is where it crosses the street and it goes in that little creek there.
Anything else, Mr. Ackland?
No, and, you know, the city's long needed this kind of a study and, and something to identify these pockets of, of problems and, and maybe a little infrastructure touch-up in some cases, some large renovation. But I think that combined with the, the bond issue that we just planned will, will do great things for the south end of town. It will help development along McCullar. A lot of that, that 70, 50 acres we're talking about is cited for commercial development. When those guys come in, it's going to be cement, okay? That, all those trees that are, that are sucking up some of the water won't be there, okay? That's going to, going to raise that problem, so we need to really look closely at how we're going to capture that water and keep it from going south.
Thank you for your comments. Members of the council, any questions for Mr. Ackland? Thank you, Mr. Ackland. Ma'am, I believe you had raised your hand a moment ago. If you will, come forward and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Beth Wells Foster. I live at 3501 East Ridge Drive. I'm trying to find out if y'all are considering dredging out the creek, Little Fossil Creek in that area again. I know you did about nine years ago and it made a huge difference, but it has built back up and it's probably, I don't know, five or six feet of just sand and mud and dirt, which drives the water towards my property. And I didn't take any pictures at the last two rains and I wish I had because we were too busy packing, getting ready to leave. We were helping the city move the, the blocking purposes back further and further. We were watching people drive up in our yard to drive around what she was talking about when they blocked. They were driving around it just so they could drive in that deep of water and, but what we're concerned about is it's coming north and I'm sure it's because there's so much cement north of us now and it's bringing all that sand and it's building back up and the water is probably worse than I've ever seen it in 12 years. That's the only thing that I can think of that could happen. We get down there and spend hours every weekend cleaning it out ourselves, trying to keep it to where the water can go through without blocking up there at that bridge and it was going over the bridge. I know y'all know, you had the city clean up the bridge after that ordeal and I was just wondering if y'all have any plans to do anything right there.
Mr. Torres, any comments regarding dredging out that portion just west of East Ridge?
If, if we could, Mayor, have Chuck possibly address that. I'm not...
There are no plans for President to do anything, or, I'll, I'll look at it.
I really wish you would. I would love a dot. We were, we were getting ready to leave both days. We watched it Sunday, I guess, and we were terrified, although it was worse two weeks ago and we got more rain yesterday, was it yesterday or Sunday, that it rained so hard and so long, but we were worse two weeks ago. We were another five minutes and we would have been out of there and it just stopped raining. I guess God answered our prayer because we really didn't want to leave.
Councilmember Henderson, I believe you have a question for our speaker.
Thanks, Mayor. Ms. Foster, what part of East Ridge do you live on? You live on the north side of the bridge, the south side of the bridge?
The north side of the bridge. Dana comes right out in front of my home.
Okay.
Right there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Williams?
Okay, I've got a question. You said it was nine years ago when it was dredged?
I believe it was about nine years ago.
Mr. Hendricks, were you here at that time? Do you know what the cost was at that time or?
That project started prior to me coming, that project started prior to me coming to work for the city, but it was still going on. It was, it was in progress probably two years after I came to work here. And it started at Beech and Broadway and went all the way down to, almost to the city limits.
Did they widen that in at that time or just dredge it?
They, they really didn't widen the channel, they just cleaned it out. They reshaped the banks and cleaned out the, the trees and pretty much slicked it off.
On a normal rain at, at East Ridge there, I haven't been there in years, I know it used to be a dry weather crossing, but a normal rain, does the pipes underneath the bridge carry the water okay or does it always go across the top of the road?
Uh, no. This is the first time in probably, well, no, this is the second time, third time. Third time probably in the past nine years that I've almost been evacuated. We were, in fact, three years ago, I watched a car be just pulled right down Dana into the creek. And that's right there in front of my home. The creek changes courses right there at the bridge and the bridge is lower, I guess, on my side and it hits that bridge and goes over and just goes straight down. Little Fossil becomes Dana.
Right.
And it just carries that way.
Dana becomes Little Fossil.
Or, excuse me.
I would like to look and see what the cost might have been at that time, Mr. City Manager, and...
I'll check into that.
And see.
Dredge that.
Just go through and clean that out. And also in between, even Mr. Hatley's probably from Venture on down around, I would like to see the, what it costs to clean that debris out and not actually go through and re-service making a plate and new creek. We get that brush out there and the, the sand that's used up that's washed in on, that sand is washed from up north.
It's, yeah, it's, and it's washed up on my side, which gives us less room for the water to run through there.
I appreciate you coming out and talking to us, letting us know about it.
I really appreciate y'all listening to me. And I know there's not much you can do in that area because we were told nine years ago, if they dug it any deeper, it would have to be dynamited out, so, because it's...
Fossil.
Yeah.
Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I have a question for Chuck. You had mentioned, nine years ago when they did this dredging, you, you said that they started it at Beech and Broadway and pretty much went all the way to the city limits, which would lead me to believe that they crossed Venture there and went on south. Did, did they not get that far? Or did, did you misspeak when you said they went all the way to the city limits?
Like I said, I, I wasn't here during the entire project. When, when I started, they were already, I believe, east of Haltum Road. They were working down the, by Thomas Road and, and that neighborhood when I, when I started here.
So to the best of your recollection, it's never been dredged where Mr. Hatley was speaking earlier, where his, you know, his property's washing out?
Round Venture? I thought it was. I thought that project did include part of that, but I, I may not be right.
Well, I too would be interested in the cost of that, but I was just wondering how far we had gone and, and how far in, you know, in the past that had been done. So we'll, we'll get some more information on that. Thank you.
Chuck, is, is that something that we have the equipment to do? Or is that, is it a contracted project?
We do have a, a drag line that we use back then. I would not recommend using that piece of equipment to, to do that work again. But we do have some equipment that we work in the creek with. We just don't, don't have the manpower to do it, not presently.
Is that drag line not, what's wrong with the drag line? Not built for the job or is it not worthy of the job?
It, it's about 25 years old and...
Sounds like some investigation.
Councilmember Patino?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just kind of want to add a little more to what Councilmember Williams said and Councilmember Jennings. Went out there and I kind of took a look at that area from East Ridge all the way to I'm not an engineer, but what I could see is that, in particular, that a bridge on East Ridge and Venture, they're way too low. So in effect, whenever the water gets high enough and it doesn't take very long, they become a dam. And also, I noticed on Bellnapp, on, on the bridge, there's a big old tree with a big old stump that's plugging up that, that bridge. I don't know how long that tree's been there, but I imagine it might have been there since the last time it rained about a couple of weeks ago, about the time that Skyline got flooded. There's a lot of dead trees due to the fact when they spray the defolant, a lot of those trees died. And so therefore, those trees are there, eventually they're going to fall and they're going to create a problem. So I think that is, it's, for giving our citizens some type of relief quicker than this other plan that we're talking about, that this is going to take a long time. And I think that our staff, I'd like to also recommend that we kind of look into it and see the, how much it would cost to go in there and put some track lotus inside that creek. And I think that most of that is in hard rock. I think that they would be able to get in there and, and get all those sandbars out there because what they're doing, they're kind of making the water turn. There's one in particular out there west of Venture. The water's turning and in turn it's creating where the water kind of starts eroding onto the bank. And it will cause this. Anytime that you put an obstacle in front of the water, it causes it to turn up ahead, downstream, and kind of start eroding on the side. So that creek from Venture and possibly all the way to Beach is in terrible shape. So I think that we need to really do a study and see what the cost is going to be. And I think that'd be the best way that we can give our citizens an immediate relief and then follow up with the plan that we've been talking about. Thank you.
Councilmember Hurley?
Mayor, I'm not much of an accurate historian, but my time goes way back. And what Ms. Hendricks was talking about a while ago, there was a project going back in the early or mid eighties to deepen, to widen that creek and to deepen it. The biggest problem they ran into was the fact that it's a rock bottom and they even explored the possibilities of using a dynamite to blast it out. It was just an insurmountable task at that time with respect to the cost, the equipment of the city and everything else. They claimed that, or what they claimed then was that with the rock bottom, it was good because there wouldn't be any erosion. Of course, then you've got to maintain the banks. So for what it's worth, the council's thing about putting drag lines in there, I think it's a little bit deeper of a problem than that.
Do we have anyone else in the audience who would like to address this particular issue? I see your hand up and we have one over here also. And what I'd like, go ahead and come forward if you would. Have three, the lady over here and then Ms. Sparland back here. What I'd like to ask you to do, if you've heard some things that someone else has already said, to just go ahead and say, "I agree with someone a moment ago," and we'll try to, try to keep this moving forward.
My name is Joanne McCovens. I live at 3637 Leighton. And as far as coming back to that, it was in 86, that's when y'all got down to Midway. I mean, down to Thomas, because I owned the land and they stopped there. What the problem would be is the fact that the trees have grown back up. We've not had any flooding area since then till now and the trees have grown up and that's what's stopped it from up there. But what my question is tonight is, are y'all going to let the public know when you are going to have the, the meetings on the flooding?
Mr. Torres, would you like to respond to that?
I'm not sure I understand the question totally. If you're referring to the follow-up meetings that'll be required for the adoption of the plan, is, is that what your question is?
On the bond, when y'all put the bond through.
She's, she's talking about the bond. She's on the corner of Thomas.
Thomas and Baker.
And Baker there. And she owns that property. She was talking about the bond election.
Okay. For, for the large drainage project.
Right.
Just keep in mind, those bonds, the way things are scheduled right now, are not going to be issued until 2006.
2004, right. 2006.
Is it six? Is it 2004?
Is it four?
For another few years.
Right, right. But the final plan, the final plan.
The, the, the final plan, I feel certain, and Greg, you may elaborate on this, but I feel certain that the final plan won't, won't be completed for, for some time. Is the Corps of Engineers actually going to do the design?
But your question was, I believe...
That was my question to Greg was, I overheard, just, you know, and that's what I was asking.
Joanne is concerned with the Little Fossil Creek project and that's a project where we're, I got to say fixing to get to an agreement with the Corps of Engineers and that agreement obviously identify our responsibilities, the Corps' responsibilities. And we will be having public meetings, meeting with the residents again and...
That's why I was in here and I was listening and I thought that you were saying you wanted to know if they wanted to make it public or not public. And that's why I was wanting to know that.
Now, on this plan tonight, you know, tonight's a public hearing on this plan for the citywide. Little Fossil Creek, while it's an element of this plan, it's really a separate issue because we already have a funding mechanism identified. The voters voted on that. That plan's already going forward. We just haven't taken the next step, which is to formally enter into the contractual agreement with the Corps of Engineers. Once we do that, that project is back on schedule and once we have something to present to the public, we'll do that. Unfortunately, I don't see us being in a position to present something to the public in terms of a nice plan for at least maybe six months to a year down the road. However, I see Joanne a lot more than that, so I'm able to keep her up to speed.
That's what, that was one of my concerns because I was, I was in listening a while ago when y'all were in there and I thought that I had overheard a different, so I overheard a different thing going on. That was my concern.
Your question was, will you be notified when...
Right. I just want to be notified.
The answer to that is yes.
You know, and there's a lot of people down there by that that would like to be notified too. But as far as going back to when y'all were talking about, when that flooding back in 86, that's when they did clear the creek out. And that's since then, they've not had a problem because I've been there, I've seen it every time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We had the gentleman back, yes, would you like to come forward? And then I think Mr. Fowler had indicated he'd like to speak and then Ms. Sparland. And then I'm going to make some closing comments unless someone has just a tremendous, something you need to say. And yes, we'll, we'll recognize you. Give us your name and address, please.
My name is Thomas Reed. I live at 5812 Bonanza, Lot 172. I'm in the Skyline Mobile Home Park. And I'll make this brief. My property is, backs up directly to the drainage, to the, to the creek behind and we've been evacuated twice now in a period of two, two and a half weeks. The water does, is undermining my trailer. It's becoming unstable and we spent days and days cleaning up trash. And we spent days and days cleaning up trash. Something's got to be done before somebody gets killed. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much for your input. We appreciate that, Mr. Fowler. And then Ms. Sparland, if you'll be ready following Mr. Fowler, and then the lady in the second row.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name's Trey Fowler. I reside at 3220 Jane Lane. Had a couple of pieces of property that I was going to ask you about or ask staff about. I guess the Salona Circle issue first. I'm in the process of purchasing a piece of property on Salona Circle also, so I'll be affected by that myself, as well as having a piece of property at Midway, 6217. We had proposed myself, and Mr. Lastra was unable to be here tonight, which owns Lastra and Lastra Plumbing. He owns plus or minus 10 acres. Myself and another gentleman own five acres there, and then Larry Dennis is our next-door neighbor. There is a, and this is where I don't want to speak out of turn, I'd like to ask the city engineer. There's a city drainage easement that runs behind Monita Street. And I believe there's an downfall that comes in from behind Salona Circle, that there's a easement or drainage utility easement. Is that correct, Greg?
There is a 36 by 22 inch puddle in a drainage easement.
But that's in the property owners of Salona Circle, is that correct?
Right, in their backyards or immediately adjoining their backyards.
And the reason I ask is because the five acres that we have is virtually, it's unusable. I have cattle there right now, and that's about all it's good for. And it's not even good for that, just due to the fact of, if you've been down there right now, it's a lake. And I understand exactly what these citizens are saying. Mr. Lastra and myself, and I can't speak for Mr. Dennis for sure, but I've ran it by him before, the city owns the water tower in the back of his property also. We had offered to alleviate part of our problem. If there's any utilization of the city acquiring an easement on the backs of our property, where we could possibly drain our water to the back and drain it over the channel that goes behind Monita. And I don't know if that's an option or not, but that's most definitely something that would benefit, I think would quite possibly benefit the citizens of Salona as well as ourselves as property owners on Midway. We have a terrible problem. And I understand exactly what they're saying. It's still, you know, it's two weeks before mine ever even begins to dry out. I'll have six inches of water staying. As a matter of fact, I even have a little detention pond there that I put in just to try to help some of the water, you know, isolate it into one area. Because it was just, I have pictures from last year when we had all the rains and the springs, it'd stay for two and three weeks, and it'd be, you know, it'd be two to three inches deep the entire, you know, the entire time. And if that's something that y'all might like to look into, I still think Mr. Lastra would be amenable to working with you. There's probably one or two other property owners to the east of us. But really, as far as those three property owners, which we have majority of that that backs up to Salona Circle, I think that if the city could, you know, possibly talk to us about acquiring some easement and then allowing us to put our water in there also and getting it over to the Monita, or I call it the Monita Drainage Area. There's a concrete culvert there.
I believe Greg indicated that that could be something that he could look at as our engineer.
Okay.
Okay.
And I think that that would probably help a lot for Salona Circle. Of course, like I say, I'm in the process of buying a home over there, purchasing a piece of property, so I have an interest on Salona Circle also. I mean, I need to be able to get in and get out of it. Another question is for the 3200 block of Jane Lane, which my current residence is there. We had signed a petition, I believe, 1996 or '97. There's 20 homeowners on there that live on the block. There was one absentee homeowner. We received, 19 of the 20 homeowners had signed the petition to, for a new reconstruction of our street, which our biggest deal was not only that it's, you know, it's not a bad surface street, but we do have a drainage problem there that's terrible. And it drains from, you know, there's a above-grade drainage that drains from all of Meadow Oaks Street, dumps down to Jane Lane, and then it runs across Jane Lane into the people's houses and then onto Rita Street also. So it affects, that drainage off Meadow Oaks affects Jane Lane, the entire 3200 block of Jane Lane, as well as Rita. You know, and you can, it's almost impassable. I have two or three neighbors where the drainage comes out that they're garages, and it just about floods their house every time. So, I mean, that's something that if that's, I don't know if that's part of the deal, but I'm sure that if we went back and, you know, the citizens at that time were willing to pay for their curb and gutter and drive approach, if that was the policy at the time, and I'm sure they would still most definitely consider that.
I see a lot of writing going on while you were talking, Mr. Fowler. So I would assume staff is listening very carefully to what you're having to say. Any comment, Mr. Torres?
We'll check. Solid news to me, obviously, but I've made some notes to check into it, find out more about that petition. Obviously, the city never responded.
No, sir, they did. At that time, they had changed, that's when the policy began to change. Mr. Van Nuen Hughes put together the street priority plan at that time, which it didn't fall on it, but it's just something I don't know if, I'm sure they would still be willing to do that if it's something that fits in y'all's budgetary.
I do know that within a couple of months, there's going to be a recommendation that will be coming to the city council about prioritization of streets for the upcoming fiscal year for improvement. And we'll take a look at this one and see if it can fit into the scheme.
Okay.
Anything else, Mr. Fowler?
No, sir, just that drainage issue, like I say, I'm sure that Mr. Lastra, he mentioned he was still willing to allow for some drainage easement at the back of his property as well as myself. And I'm sure Mr. Dennis would be acceptable to that also.
Okay.
And that might help alleviate some of the problem.
Pardon me, go ahead.
No, I'm finished.
Councilmember Henderson?
Thanks, Mayor. I've got some pictures of the 3200 block of Rita that Mr. David Staff has given me. He goes to 3225 Rita, and he handed these to me before the council meeting, and I'm just going to pass these down. It's part of the problem that Trey's talking about, and it runs down from the west side of town.
It catches.
All the way down into the creek bed there at Broadway, that creek that runs through.
Okay. The concrete channel. There's quite a bit of water that comes in off of, you know, those are all larger lots there, so, you know, everything in that area, 3200 block, Meadow Oaks, Jane Lane, and Rita are all half-acre lots, so it's catching, you know, by the time it gets down to Jane Lane and Rita, it's, Rita especially, it's catching a lot of water. And, you know, it goes into, it ends up getting into that concrete channel. But if there's another way of getting it below grade, it might be something that y'all could look at.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler. We appreciate that. Ms. Sparland?
Thank you.
If you would come forward, give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Ruth Ann Sparland, and the property I'm talking about is 2721 Haley Avenue. I can relate to what Mr. Fowler's saying because our house is on Meadow Oaks and there is a river of water running toward him. Mr. Eklund, he pointed out a bunch of property that could be commercially developed. I would ask that you be very, very sensitive to approving anything on that for what you'll do to the people that you'll run water onto, because you approved building north of Haley. And all you asked for them for drainage was to drain their water into bar ditches on either side of Haley. We've had major flood improvement on Haley in the past two weeks. We have open bar ditches with silver metal culverts, sharp edges sticking out on each end, and that is what we have. To me, that does not represent proud and progressive. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sparland. And then we have, I think finally, the lady here, and then I'm going to make a few closing comments, and we'll move forward. If you would, ma'am, give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Patty Greenwood, and I live at 6338 Salona Circle South. And I've stood here, sat there and listened and listened. And yes, the water got up high, and I've sat and listened, and I hadn't heard a proposal for anything that has helped us down on the south end of town. We are discriminated against on anything because we're on the south end of town. And like you said, that development up on the other side of us, all it's going to do is just put more water down on us. And the proposal for 2006, what are we going to do in the meantime? Wait till 2006 to do anything about our drainage down there? By then, we may not even have a home. And that's all I have to say, is I don't want consideration for the south end of town, just like the north end.
Thank you, Ms. Greenwood. Any comments, Mr. Torres, members of the council? Councilmember Williams?
Ms. Greenwood, I appreciate you coming up and speaking, and all the people on Salona We, I think for the most part, this present council is not trying to discriminate on the south end of town. We have some members that live on the south end of town. We have some that have businesses on the south end of town. And Salona Circle is just important to us, as Diamond Oaks are out north of 820. And each one of you as a citizen is important to us. That's the reason we've come together tonight at this meeting, to see if we can come up with some solution for everyone. But when you brought these pictures, your husband brought these pictures, these waters in your house, I've been in Haltem City since 1954, and I know where Salona and Bingham and all those is. I wasn't aware that water was getting that close. And I apologize, I was out of town this last weekend, and I didn't know that water got that close to you.
I was here 10 years ago and show pictures worse than that.
Yes, ma'am, but I wasn't up here 10 years ago. I came up here in 1998, and that's what we're trying to explain to you. We are going to try to get a solution. And before we adjourn tonight, we're going to give staff some direction on this to see if we can get y'all some relief on this problem.
I do thank you, Councilmember Williams. I do want to thank all of you who are here tonight, who have expressed very passionately, very personally, very intently, your interests, your concerns, your questions. We are very aware that we have a problem that needs to be addressed. And it is our intent, by listening to what you have to say, with staff making notes on how we can incorporate these things and move forward, I do want to thank all of you for being here and making the comments you have. Members of the council, any comments or questions before I call for some kind of motion on where we go from here with this matter? I have a recommendation here from our city engineer. I'd like to read that, and you tell me what you think. Mr. Van Ewen Hughes is requesting that we ask the council be asked to direct staff to include the items that were mentioned here tonight in the flood mitigation plan and prepare an ordinance for first reading on April 22nd. That's the recommendation, Mr. Van Ewen Hughes. And Mr. Torres, any comments on that recommendation?
No, I agree. That is the purpose of the meeting tonight, to get specific information that we can include in this prior to adoption, appropriate time.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes, sir, I'd like to place that in a matter of motion. And also, we'd request staff to do that, also move forward as swiftly as we can with this to get this problem alleviated.
Okay, I want to re-read what I did so there's clarity on this.
Yes, sir.
The recommendation, and I understand to be Councilmember Williams' motion, is that the council direct staff to include the items mentioned tonight in the flood mitigation plan and prepare an ordinance for first reading on April 22nd. That's your understanding of those?
Yes, sir, that's what I...
Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you, Mayor. Are these going to include what Mr. Greenwood happened to say about putting another culvert next to one, entering agreement for a possible easement, you know, between the two homeowners there and running that down? Or is this something different that we need to address?
What I'd propose is that we just solve, put in the plan to solve the Salona Circle problem. And the actual resolution of the problem, heck, it may be two more pipes. It may be a replacement of this existing, but I don't want to tie our hands. But at the same time, what I'm trying to do tonight is let's recognize the problems. A bunch of the residents here mentioned the orange dots, and let's make the concerns that were brought out tonight just as important as the concerns that were brought out with the orange dots at last August's meeting, is what I'm suggesting. And we include all those in the plan.
Does that answer your question? We have a second. Councilmember Avery?
That was for a second, ma'am.
Councilmember Markham?
That was for a second, ma'am.
We had, I believe our attorney wants to make a statement at this point, is that correct?
Yeah, I don't want the council, I know the council doesn't want to drive the city secretary crazy with the fact that we've got this posted tonight as a public hearing only with no action being taken. I think the staff is clear on the direction the council wants to see, and the fact is we can have an ordinance on the next council agenda to include all these items. But because of the way it's posted, the city secretary has reminded me that we don't have anything for action for the council tonight, so the motion itself is not anything that we need to be voting on.
So Councilmember Williams and Councilmember Henderson withdraw that motion?
That would be just a staff directive.
Okay.
Exactly.
Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say that Greg had mentioned something about these orange dots, and I think the orange dots are a great thing. But unless those orange dots are waterproof and you cover those people's houses with them, that's, you know, all orange dots in the world aren't going to help those people when that water's coming in their house down there. So I certainly agree with the concept. I think it's needed. I think everyone needs to understand that this is a plan. It didn't get like this overnight. We don't have a magic wand. We can't wave it. But we can direct staff to do everything within their power to concentrate. People on Salona Circle are the people that showed up here in force tonight. They are the people outside of possibly the people on Rita Lane that I've seen that had the most water. I think that we need some kind of effort, dedicated effort, into relieving their problem. And I don't know, you know, I have no idea what we can do to get them a little relief, but if it takes putting in another pipe, then certainly we need to look at that, and we need to look at that very quickly come budget time. I don't want to wait till October to do something. We've proved in the past over on Old Denton Road, we had a city manager tell us that regardless of what we did, if we didn't spend $300,000, we couldn't help those people. Well, we had citizens that volunteered their time, and we had people on staff that volunteered their time, and we took some machinery. People went out there and they cleaned on that thing all day, and Judge Bino sent some people out there, and lo and behold, it's come to frog-choking rains, and those people don't have any water in their houses over there. So anything that we can do to help ease that problem, I think we need to do it, but I also think that we need to do that particular area as quickly as possible. So I would just like to ask staff to give us a little more dedicated effort in regard to the Salona Circle problem, as far as being able to get some of that water off of those people as soon as possible. And yes, by all means, let's go ahead with this plan. Let's do everything that we can. Keep it in mind, you know, you were talking about starting on the south end of town, Greg, and that's where it has to start, so, you know, that's a good starting point. We've got to get the water off of those people before we can move on up the creek. So I'd just like to see something done there as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Councilmember Jennings. I think where we are then, as we bring this hearing to a focal point, is that the staff has been directed to include the items mentioned tonight in the flood mitigation plan and prepare an ordinance for first reading on the 22nd. Do I close the public hearing tonight, or do we continue that?
That's the option of the council. You can do either.
Counsel, what is your pleasure?
Closing and reopening at the next one.
Okay, do we need a motion with regard to closing, or I simply announce that it's closed?
You have the authority just to announce it closed, ma'am.
Members of the council, anyone opposed to closing the public hearing? There being none, the public hearing is closed, and we will address this issue on first reading at the next council meeting. Members of the council, we've been here an hour and a half. We still have visitor citizens forum announcements, boards commissioned, meeting dates. Would you like to take a five or 10-minute break?
Send form of motion?
No.
Let's go.
We will take, let's take 10, if you would, please. And events, Mr. Markham, I believe you have an announcement?
Yes, Mayor, I do. Thank you. But every year at this time, there are Friends of the Library have a book sale. This year is going to be on the 18th, 19th, and the 20th of this month. The time of the book sale is during regular open hours of the library, and everyone is invited. The Friends of the Library do a wonderful job in this city. They work very hard for this library, and they are to be commended. And I invite each and every one out to come out and help them with the book sale, and maybe a whole lot of good things will come out of it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Markham, Councilmember Henderson, I believe you have a couple of announcements.
Thanks, Mayor. I do have a couple announcements. First of all, I want to acknowledge and say thank you to our great fire department. I happen to be... thank you to our great fire department, I happened to be at the Swiftwater Rescue on Chessy Circle on Sunday, when the gentleman and his son were out there in, in the middle of the creek, the picture was on the front page of the Star Telegram, and our guys, they did a great job. I want to say a special thanks to, to David Chilkick, he's the guy who entered the water and actually went out and got the boy that was in the creek. Other firemen that were there was Brian Barber, Bill Ferguson, Keith Newton, Michael Powell, Ian Tucker, Chris Tyrone, Jason Williams, Derek Wood, and Ryan Zelsny, and the person in charge of this situation was Captain Joel Thompson, and again, I just want to say thanks to those guys, they do a wonderful job. Another announcement, I want to say another thank you to the Mobile Crime Watch program, I happened to ride out with those guys Sunday evening after, in the second storm, and I was with a couple of different guys, and, and they do a wonderful job, too, they help alleviate some problems by putting out barricades and distributing sandbags to, to people who are in need, and placing the barricades and closing off streets to keep cars from, from stalling out or, or getting swept away, and these guys, they do a lot, it's all volunteer, and again, I just want to say thanks to them, and that's all, Mayor.
Thank you for bringing that to, to our attention, both of those items, as well as that of Councilmember Markham, very, very important. Ms. Harris, I believe you have something to say about the elections coming up and early voting?
Yes, next Wednesday, April the seventeenth, early voting will start in Halton City, it will be conducted at, in, here at City Hall from eight to five, from April the seventeenth through April the twenty-ninth, and there will be some extended hours on Saturday from nine AM to two PM here at City Hall and pre-council.
Okay, any other announcements? Well, I have one I feel obligated to make, our city secretary has a birthday today. Now, I wish I had done this while everybody was here, and while Channel Eight and Channel Eleven were rolling along, you know, but I want to, on behalf of all of us on the council, say happy birthday to Helen, I've found out one thing, a gentleman never asks how old someone is, they never even guess, but I happen to know how old Ms. Harris is, she and I are the same age, and in January, I celebrated my thirty-ninth birthday.
I do.
So, happy thirty-ninth birthday, Ms. Harris, from all of us...
You did well.
And many, many more. Other business, you see item, gentlemen, you see item number eleven regarding our meeting date for a council meeting on May twenty-seventh, which happens to be Memorial Day, we're being asked to give consideration to, to counseling that regular meeting on the twenty-seventh, I'd like a motion that reflects what your pleasure is in regard to that. Councilmember Hurley?
Mayor, I move that we cancel the meeting for May the twenty-seventh.
Okay, Councilmember Avery?
I second, Mayor.
Ms. Harris, I believe you also mentioned in the pre-council briefing that we will have another meeting to canvass the official election results on the ninth, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, we still will have two meetings in the month of May, only one of them will be the full meeting, the other will be the council to canvass the, the vote, so we still will have plenty to do. So, the motion and the second is on the floor to, to counsel the meeting on the twenty-seventh. Any discussion on the motion? If you would, register your vote. Councilmember Markham, do you wish to register your vote on this issue?
I did.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate that, and it passes by unanimous vote. Boards and commissions, Councilmember Avery, I believe you have some activity in this area?
Mayor, I moved that the council ratify the resignation of Louis Fernandez from the Minority Affairs Committee.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation to ratify, if you would express your intent or your desire in this regard, and that passes. Councilmember Williams, there we go, we have everyone voting, and we vote by unanimous vote to ratify.
I didn't want my little brother to look bad down there, so...
Item number fourteen is the attendance requirement, with all persons present, there's no action to be taken, we're now ready at nine sixteen to move into executive session pursuant to section five fifty-one, point oh seven one and point oh seven two, and I do want to mention that our meeting tonight is being telecast live, we have no idea how long executive sessions or closed sessions take, so we will not come back for a live telecast after our closed session meeting, but that will be projected in the telecast that are replayed at intervals over the next couple of weeks. So, having said that, we're now ready to, to adjourn into closed session. The time is ten twenty-five, we're reconvened into regular session, there is no items discussed in executive session that requires action by the council, with all items on the agenda having been addressed, we stand adjourned.